I'd like to call the August 20th, 2013 Yukon City Council Meeting to order. Please stand for the invocation Pastor Tom Buckley and the flag salute please.
Let's pray. Father, we just thank you so much for this time that we get to gather. Father, we ask that you just continue to bless this amazing community, bless these amazing council members. God give us wisdom to handle your business. Father, we just ask you to bless us all tonight in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll please.
Smith.
Here.
Opitz.
Here.
Alberts.
Here.
Gerba.
Here.
McCarron.
Here.
Any presentations or proclamations?
None this evening, Mayor.
Now is the time for the visitor section of our meeting. This is anyone who would like to come forward and address the council on a non-agended item. Do we have anybody that would like to come forward and address the council? Seeing none, we'll recess as the Yukon City Council and reconvene as a Yukon municipal authority. Item 1A, YMA consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the Yukon Municipal Authority by unanimous consent can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion to approve item A, the minutes of the regular meeting of August 6, 2013, and B, payment of material claims in the amount of $98,618.26. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Do we have any discussion? Any discussion? Call the roll please.
Opitz.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Gerba.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
Alberts.
Yes.
At this time, we'll adjourn as the SYMA and reconvene as the Yukon City Council. Our council agenda becomes, begins with item 1, consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the city council by unanimous consent can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion that will approve item A, the minutes of the regular meeting of August 6, 2013, B, payment of material claims in the amount of $392,632.21, C, designating the items on the attached list from the Technology Department as surplus and authorizing their sale, donation, or trade, D, denial of claim number 132431-TW from Tracy Hilgemberg as recommended by the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group, item E, denial of claim number 132367-TW from Bev Christensen as recommended by the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group, item F, the renewal of the agreement for services between the City of Yukon and the Yukon Chamber of Commerce for the period beginning July 1, 2013 through June 30, 2014 at a cost of $1,500 per month plus a sales tax incentive, item G, setting the date for the next regular council meeting for September 3, 2013, 7:00 PM in the council chambers of the Centennial Building, 12 South 5th Street. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Do we have any discussion? Do we have any discussion? Call the roll please.
Gerba.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
Opitz.
Yes.
Alberts.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes. Item 2, reports of boards, commissions, and city officials.
None this evening.
Moving on, item 3, discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding Stone Mill subdivision traffic control measures. We have two discussion items on our agenda this evening. Each will be handled in the same fashion. You will be allowed three minutes to speak, and if we get a little bit repetitive or it becomes redundant, we're going to move on to our next agenda item or next step on our agenda. So at this time, do we have anybody that would like to come forward and speak?
We need a motion, I believe.
Oh, I'm sorry. We need a motion as to whether we will address. Item 3, discussion, consideration, possible action regarding Stone Mill subdivision traffic control measures.
Sub move.
Second.
I believe at this time, we can call any residents who would like to come forward. Please state your name and address.
Brady Bruce, B-R-U-S is the last name, 700 Stone Mill Boulevard.
At your pleasure, Mr. Bruce. We have three minutes.
I know. I'm going to start my stopwatch as well. First of all, I want to thank all the Stone Mill residents who have come and those who've sent emails. We have a number of emails as well. Because of the short time, I just made a quick outline to get everybody else going who I know probably wants to speak as well, so I'll just get after this. Typically, I would say when I come before city councils, as I have before, to build buildings, erect towers, or whatever it may be, I might have said, "Thank you. You've done a great job. I appreciate working with you." Some of you, I've had a very difficult time, and I know some of the neighbors in Stone Mill have had as well, and that's evidenced by their emails, so I would just mention that for the record. January 17, I began dialogue with Mitchell Horton, asked for stop signs, and he told me at that time that the developer, quote, "does not like stop signs in Stone Mill because they're un aesthetically pleasing." I would just mention that he was the one who brought up the developer. I did not, and we have continually had many people bring up that the city says that the developer doesn't want a gate, or the developer doesn't want stop signs, whatever it may be, but then the developer says the other thing, so it's kind of people pointing fingers at each other. On January 28, I sent an email with satellite data, details, suggestions, no response. I called for a response back. On February 14, I emailed again because of no response. I included Mr. Bottom for the first time. I sent pictures of other three-way stops in neighborhoods, faulty stop signs in our neighborhood. I thanked the city for their concerns at that point, and again, that was when I anticipated the city would be working favorably and with good faith with us. March 29, after no responses, I alerted the city that we had rented a radar gun. We then proceeded to spend about eight hours out there. We had over 230 traffic violations, over 30 miles per hour, some between 35 and 40 miles per hour. We provided those to the city on a DVD to most of the city council members. Mr. Bottom responded with telling me that I was more than welcome to contact the police department and file misdemeanor complaints on those individuals. I think Mr. Bottom missed the point. On April 1, Mr. Bottom tried to have the city attorney send me a letter telling me not to correspond with the city anymore because we had threatened litigation. Indeed, we had not, and I told the good city attorney that I would continue to correspond with whoever I wanted to on the city council. Mr. Alberts was gracious enough to attempt to help us for a while. We began a runaround that lasted about seven months, and that's why we are here today. We have an issue in Stone Mill, and those residents here will attest to that. I find it very strange that it's taken-
Mr. Bruce, you have 15 seconds.
I understand, and now I have an additional three because you interrupted me. I find it strange that it took at lunch for two stop signs to get installed at an intersection in Stone Mill, and then 36 hours those stop signs existed-
Mr. Bruce, your time has expired.
No, it hasn't. And then the stop signs were removed in 36 hours-
Mr. Bruce, your time has expired.
Because of another phone call.
Mr. Chief Corn.
And I'm done. I'm done. And I want to say I thank Chief Corn for his work as well, as I have from the beginning.
I'd like to make one point based on a statement you've made. I have been on the council for two years, and you have not provided a DVD that had gotten to me at any point in time. Next speaker, please.
Your question was answered, sir.
Next speaker, please.
My name is Angie Bruce, and I live at 700 Stone Mill. Ready?
Yes, ma'am.
I have some emails of residents that were not able to attend, but every person that I've spoken with in our neighborhood is very concerned about this issue. Many people have tried for many years, and the neighbors in Stone Mill are frustrated with not only the issue that we have, but that we feel like we've been repeatedly ignored by the city on this issue. Just a small example, we were invited by John Alberts to attend a city council meeting. I called on July 27 and spoke with Doug Shivers and asked if we could be put on the agenda. During that phone call, he told me that we could not be put on the agenda, and then a few minutes later, he told me that we could be put on the agenda if Mr. Alberts would request that we be put on the agenda. I asked him what, you know, formal documentation he needed. He said all he needed was an email. I corresponded with John Alberts. I have a copy of an email where he sent Doug Shivers an email asking that we be added to the agenda. I called the next day, sent an email the next day to verify that we would be on the agenda, got another email from Mr. Albert saying that he would not be asking us to be put on the agenda, although he already had asked that, and then said that we would need to file a formal appeal, but he did not know what we needed to do to file that appeal, that he would get us information. I still, to this date, have not received that information. We got a letter saying that we would be put on the agenda, and that's why we're here. I may have used up my time and all that other people read this.
No, you have, you have.
Okay. This, that's just a small example of just like two or three days' worth where it just felt like with everybody continuous runaround. We were told, the city council told us that we needed to go to the Traffic Commission. We went to the Traffic Commission. People there agreed that we had a problem, said that they would make recommendations to resolve this problem. A lot of ideas were discussed. No recommendation was made. At the city council meeting following that, you can look in the minutes, and when it's asked, you know, when it's at the part where you asked for recommendations from, you know, the Traffic Commission or other departments, no recommendation was made. Then we were told to come back to the city council meetings. There's just a lot of runaround and no solutions, and this seems like, you know, a lot of problems in the city, sometimes they're not fixable. This is, this is very fixable by a number of different measures that would be not extremely expensive, would improve safety of children in the neighborhood, improve our lives, and we are here really to ask you all to act.
Time's just about it. May I ask you a question, Ms. Bruce?
Yes.
Is there, can you tell me any other time that you, or Mr. Bruce, or someone on this issue has come before the council?
No. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay.
No, ma'am.
Do we have another speaker, please? Yes, sir.
I'm John Richardson, 2105 Stony Brook Lane. Most of these people live at the front of Stone Mill. I live at the back, very close to Parkland. First off, thank you for allowing us to speak to you this evening. I appreciate that. I went to the Traffic Commission meeting, and there were many of us there, and we expressed our concerns about the problem of the traffic, the excessive speed, and just the large volume of vehicles that are going on those streets through our neighborhood. I have two grandchildren, and I don't feel that it's safe for them to be playing in the front yard so close to a street where there's an excessive amount of traffic, as well as many of them exceeding the speed limit. I was very troubled by some minutes that I saw of the Traffic Commission meeting the month after we went to it. Mr. Charlie Lee stated that "The issue seems to be a desire to keep people from other neighborhoods out of the Stone Mill neighborhood," and that's, that's a direct quote from their minutes of that meeting. "I don't want to keep anybody out of our neighborhood. I want to keep vehicles that are exceeding the speed limit out of our neighborhood. I want, I want there to be some, some people that are abiding by the laws, and that is not happening at this point." There are another, a number of things that I think could be done to address this issue. Some of them were suggested to the Traffic Commission, and they decided that they were not appropriate. Installation of stop signs and speed bumps could help. Construction of another entrance from Stone Mill to either Yukon Parkway or Northwest 10th Street might be another option that would help. Placement of a traffic gate between Stone Mill and Parkland would certainly solve the problem. It would create an inconvenience, and certainly it would create an inconvenience for those of us who live at the back of Stone Mill, simply because we would then have to go through the only exit to Stone Mill out onto Yukon Parkway. All we want, and I know you guys want this too, is we want a safe neighborhood, and we don't have a safe neighborhood right now. Something needs to be done before something really, really bad happens there. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else who'd like to come forward?
Yeah, I'm Jim Hostetler. I live at 2108 Stony Mill, or Stony Brook. I've been there about three and a half years. Been almost T-bone so many times, I've lost count. It went into the street coming from Parkland to, there's three little kids there, just toddlers, and they got a brand-new one. It's going to be a toddler soon. You go to the north end, and there's a new house there. I think they got three toddlers. The people that are passing through seem to forget that used to all be a wheat field. Most of the time I lived in this town, that was a wheat field. From Yellowstone on houses, in Yellowstone, you could see out the lights at night. Okay, so now, one of the few places in town that turns into a curvy road seems to be like a challenge, and I don't mean just for kids. I mean soccer moms, everybody. Anyone who has business north or south on Yukon Parkway cuts through there. I have come off Cornwell right behind someone and seen them blow through the subdivision, run the stop sign right at Yellowstone, and blow by my house, and then I pull in the driveway. There's other times I can't pull in the driveway because I'm going to get hit, or if I slow down, I'm going to get hit from the rear. If you back out, I mean, people who come to visit, cleaning lady, yard people, when they come, I mean, they don't walk on that side of their trailer or their truck with their weed eaters and stuff. I mean, they get back over on the other side. I've almost been picked off at the mailbox. So has my wife. Now Grayson Bottom, our city manager, he talked to me, and we worked some stuff out, I thought, and, you know, they put two more 25 mile an hour speed signs. Thank you, Grayson. I appreciate that. And we also talked about a way to kind of meter the traffic, and, you know, maybe I made a problem, but I suggested a stop sign at both ends, at both, at the corner of Stony Brook and Meadowbrook Run, I think it is. And, yeah. But I was in error in that. We didn't need one going west. We needed one going north, because as I looked at it, it does block, if you've got a stop sign, it does block three houses as they jam up there, because everybody's right on everybody's butt when they're, excuse me, when they're moving.
Mr. Hostetler, we have 10 seconds.
Okay. All I can say is, how do you put two stop signs in, take you three weeks talking to the man, and they're out in 36 hours? How do you do that? Who has that kind of influence? I don't.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Jan Hostetler, and I live at 2108 Stony Brook Line, Lane, and I've almost been hit numerous times, not only checking my mail, but trying to pull out of my driveway as well. We've talked with other neighbors who have had the same problem, and I'm concerned that it took almost a year, I think, for my husband to get some Stein stops put up, but it took someone with influence to have them taken down immediately, and that concerns me about the quality of government we have in this city at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. We're, please, we want to invite anybody that has something new to add. We want to invite you to speak.
My name's Brian Frank, B-R-Y-A-N-F-R-A-N-K, 705 Stone Mill Boulevard. I was at the council, or the committee meeting that we had as well. One of the things that I shared was that it just is unimaginable to me that a community the size of Stone Mill that has multiple phases of development and now has a new phase of development with 56 new home sites, which is probably going to be somewhere around 100 to 150 new cars coming in, that we have only one point of ingress and egress, other than Parkland on the backside, but not many people really go out Parkland. What we do is we have a lot of Parkland people that come through Stone Mill either way. We have an inordinate amount of traffic in that area. They drive crazy. I can tell you, as a physician, I've had the unfortunate situation of being first responder for a young child that was hit by a teen in a truck, and when, when a kid goes down on the pavement and is brain-dead, that's a sickening place for a doctor to be. It's obviously nothing compared to the parents who have to go through that experience. We have expressed at that prior committee meeting, and we're expressing to you, this is a serious problem. Our children, our grandchildren are incredible liability. There are streak marks along the streets. There are idiots that even use My Circle Drive as a U-turn point within the neighborhood because of the, what's allowed and the culture of inappropriate driving behavior in the neighborhood. I really pray that you guys will listen and take our concerns to heart. We're wanting safety in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have some new data to share. My name's Brandon Bruce, and I live at 700 Stone Mill. Can I ask you all, how many of you guys know how many cars drive through Stone Mill a day? It's around 2,000 cars, and about 1,000 of those cars are going to Parkland. Now, I have some emails from people who can't be here today. This one's from Frank Chavez. My name's Frank Chavez, and I've lived at, I've lived at Stone Mill for six years. I have always, I've always been concerned about the speeding problems here. Most of the people speeding don't even live in this addition. I've been threatened in the past for flagging people to slow down. Something must be done before someone is hurt or killed. I wish a private gate could be built on the west entrance to the addition to Parkland. Mr. Nail should be concerned and willing to help us solve this problem. This is, this is his development, and his good fortune is tied to the goodwill and faith of people willing to pay and live here, so I could not be here. Here's another one. Will be out of town, but I would love to see the permanent gate between Parkland and Stone Mill living on the corner. It's, it's so much danger, I can't even let my children play out on the driveway, front yard, because I've come around this corner so fast that I'm afraid to. It's hard for us to even back out of our driveway, so much traffic coming around the corner. It's like a raceway, and all the Parkland traffic cutting through it. I don't understand why the city council is not helping with this problem. Guess one, our children will have to get ran over or hurt or killed. To get some action taken, we're very concerned with these problems.
Mr. Bruce, do any, do the emails that you're sharing with us, do you have any that are saying something other than what has already been said?
I think the emails say the same thing. It's like nothing, they all say different things.
They're often different people, so they're not all saying the exact same thing, no. Due to our work, we're not able to make it today. I strongly recommend gates in our neighborhood. We didn't, we do pay higher taxes than any other neighborhood. We do not have a place to raise our concerns or idea. Hope the city council will be able to resolve this. That's all I got.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bruce.
My name is Kathy Frank, and I live at 705 Stone Mill Boulevard. I'm going to also represent some of the people who could not be here. Unfortunately, we will not be able to attend. However, frankly, I have no hope that the City of Yukon will consider the needs of Stone Mill residents over the ones of the developer. This has happened several times in our seven-year experience living here. It is such a beautiful community, but so dangerous. I wish I were exaggerating, but this is a fact, how sad that this city would not even be remotely fair in their dealings with us. It's a shame and a disgrace. Another one says, "Not able to attend. I think a permanent gate between Parkland and Stone Mill would be the best solution. The traffic is unbelievable, and we don't feel safe with our kids playing. We've had vandalism and theft problems."
Ma'am, do we have any others referring to-
That referred to vandalism and theft. I don't believe that's been mentioned yet. I also know that right across the street from us, in broad daylight, a truck was stolen, and it was from a Parkland, by a Parkland resident. I'll just throw that in for free. Let me thank you all for taking the initiative to bring these issues. This is referring to the people who've been doing this. I've tried several times on my own and failed. We are one of the unfortunate families living on Meadow Run Court, the street leading into Parkland. I had called the city office many times about speeding, traffic, teens in the neighborhood, and making a mess. They've been both indifferent and very unhelpful. I've called John Nail's office. Apparently, he is unconcerned. They claim, Mr. Nail's office claimed that the city would not allow a gate to be put near Parkland, so he called, this person called the city and said, Mr. Nail said that it was his plan to have it that way. Someone photographed our son while he played outside. I called the police. Speeding 40 to 50 miles an hour, our kids can't play outside, our FedEx package got stolen. We find beer cans and trash thrown all over our lawn. Teens honking and blaring their music, loud bikes, teens on skateboards. Trucks cross the empty lot on Meadow Run into Yukon School property. The lakes get trashed. Students from the school do their daily run around the lake, and sometimes I see teens hanging out by the lake. We regret having bought our house in this beautiful neighborhood because we paid a hefty price, but lots of indifference. Here's another one that says they would like more stop signs and punish the, that way, the people who actually stop and punish the others. A permanent gate, again, is recommended.
We have 15 seconds, please.
Mm-hmm. But I think the point is that there's, there is lots of repetition here, and you all should be listening to that.
I respect your comments, and I might remind any additional speakers, this item 3 is discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding Stone Mill subdivision traffic control measures. I might also remind those that are here that this is the first time anyone has come before this council to address this problem. I don't think the question is at this point whether the council believes there is a problem. I think at this point, it's a matter of trying to find a solution that is beneficial and legal to everybody. So do we have any additional speakers that would like to add something new to this discussion?
Mr. Mayor and Councilman, my name is Jack Stewart, and I live at 405 Meadow Run Court, which is right in the middle of all this deal. And basically, the points that I would like to make is, as the neighbors have said, that evidently there is a problem, but I just want to emphasize to the city to look at it in a wise way, and not go out and do something irrational. The stop signs that were put up earlier were not warranted, and as far as I can tell, met no particular warrants, according to MU2C, which is the Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices. The subdivision on the-
What would you call it, the east end?
Is designed, more or less, to slow traffic down. The street that goes through there is very curvilinear, with fairly sharp curves. It's got some narrow lanes because of the decorations, flowers, whatever, in the, in the median section of it. There have been numerous new 25 mile an hour speed limit signs placed, probably since January, I would think. No, there's more than that, I think. I see a lot of them, but maybe some were already previously there. Okay. There's been, some new streetlights have been added that would increase visibility, and I also attended the Traffic Commission two or three months ago that this was brought up, and it sounds like that the major problem is before and after school, and I'm hoping I'm not interpreting anything wrong, but that-
I'm sorry, the discussion here is with the council, not with the-
Thanks. That was my take on it. It was primarily a before and after school deal. It sounded like possible additional enforcement might be required, but the speed limit through the whole neighborhood is 25 miles an hour. The streets on that, on the east end are designed to reduce speed drastically, and we just, I just don't want to have needless stop signs placed that will cause more problems than they help. They, they need to meet warrants. They have not met the warrants, and precautions- they need to meet warrants. They have not met the warrants. And precautions currently are in place to ensure the safety, but they just need to be obeyed to begin with, and if not obeyed, then enforced. Thank you.
Hello. Sunny Richardson, 2105 Stony Brook Lane. I just wanted to say, he was talking about different things they've done, and I want to say I've called the police. The police have sent people out there. Unfortunately, when the police are there, you can see their car. So you're gonna slow down. There is no place the police officers can hide. So that does no good whatsoever to have extra patrol, in my opinion. Thank you.
Based on that, I think I'd like to mention that there have been, uh, a couple of, uh, times that police have been stationed in, uh, Stone Mill to address this exact issue because of complaints by residents. So I think that they, uh, they were giving some serious effort to making it happen. And they, we've had, uh, police officers stationed in Stone Mill, ranging from, uh, officers on bicycles, uh, officers on a motorcycle, marked vehicles, as well as unmarked vehicles at different times. So we do have numbers based on traffic, um, that has passed through Stone Mill. Um, and it, it could be coincidence that, uh, some of the numbers that, uh, your neighbors have provided do not coincide with, um, police numbers based on their, uh, their studies. Uh, for example, Mr. Bruce, young Mr. Bruce asked a valid question. Do we know how many vehicles travel through Stone Mill on any given day? And on a particular day, uh, 2,400 passed through. And, uh, 5.33% exceeded the 25 mile an hour speed limit, which is, um, unfortunate, but not uncommon in any neighborhood in the city of Yukon. Um, that being said, I, we need to see if there are any more residents in Stone Mill that would like to add something new.
Yes, sir. My name is Frank Chavez and I've lived at 509 Stone Mill for, uh, six years or more. And, uh, I believe that 5% is really pretty low. I'd say it's more than 50% of people speeding through there. Uh, I've actually tried to stop, slow people down. And I've been threatened several times by people. And I don't, I know it's not people in our addition. I can tell that it's not people in our addition. And I don't wanna, you know, say why, but, uh, I can tell. Uh, just respect the law, you know, and slow down a little bit and take care of our children. Uh, I, um, I bought a house there believing it's a great neighborhood. And I still believe that. And so I just, uh, ask you please to, uh, try to take care of our families in Stone Mill. Uh, but, uh, I know that it's up to you what you decide. Uh, I just, uh, I wish that, uh, something could be done to slow people down coming from the west Parkland. Uh, that's where I see the most traffic. Cause I have honestly been out there and watched this. And I've seen it, uh, for more than six years. So, uh, whether the statistics are correct or not, I, I, I know that's what's happening. So I ask you please, sir, to try to do something for us. Because this is a beautiful neighborhood. A lot of wonderful people live there with a lot of beautiful children. And I would not want anything to happen to one child. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chavez.
Thank you, sir.
Do we have anyone else that'd like to come forward? At this time, we'll listen to comments from the council. Mr. Opitz?
I would like to hear from maybe the, I'm, I'm sure we'll hear from the traffic commission on what their thoughts were, but, uh, has the police chief got anything that he can add to all the different things that's been done?
Councilman, what I'd tell you is that the information, uh, since it's been relayed by the citizens, it doesn't necessarily coincide with our information. Uh, the comment was made, and I believe that to be very true as it is with most areas in our city. Marked presence, whether by patrol car or speed detection device, uh, which is where we collect our data, does deter things from happening. Whether that's speeding, disobeying a stop sign, committing a crime, uh, uniform presence of a police officer has that effect and does reduce that amount. So, um, we'll continue those efforts at your direction, uh, at city manager's direction, uh, would continue to answer any call by any of the residents within that area, which I believe we have, especially in the time period that's been outlined, uh, through several of their complaints. So, they're, they're very likely can be, uh, you know, a, a case made for the incidents that have been described. Uh, most of the citizens, when they've had serious complaints, have had those documented and reported to us. And we've taken those, uh, that information and filed the reports. And we'll continue to, to address, uh, any of their concerns that come up that get forwarded to our office. So, uh, we'll stay proactive in, in stepping up our enforcement and doing what we can to make that neighborhood as safe as we try to make every neighborhood.
Thank you. That radar system though, just a radar system being out there, that actually slows them down evidently, right?
It, it does. The, that device, uh, gives you a visual display that's on a 16-inch, uh, display board. It has a set of flashing lights. It can be set at the speed threshold. And, uh, then it also records all of those registered data. Uh, so that's vehicles traveling at or away from that device. Uh, we get those speeds and, and it detects that as a reading for the particular time period we may have it set there. Thank you, Chief.
Councilman Alberts?
A couple of things. Um, just as a point of clarification with Ms. Bruce, we had an email that went back and forth. I've, I've been around for 12 years and this is the first time in 12 years. So I apologize that the procedure was a bit cumbersome, but what's happening here tonight is, uh, is a result of your persistence. So it certainly has paid off. And it, it wasn't on anyone's part that, at least that we were trying to deter the process. We were trying to define the process. So congratulations, you all as a group have helped do that. And, uh, your persistence has paid off. Um, here's my concern. Um, I can tell from several of the people that there's a motion involved in this situation. And I certainly would be very passionate if it involved my son or, or my family members. And the last thing that we need is, is to, is someone out in the street, Mr. Chavez, or I'm sorry, what's your, not Mr. Frank. The gentleman here, you said that, that's, but this gentleman also raised his hand that he had tried to stop someone. I don't, I don't think that's a good idea. So, uh, and, and I'm concerned about that.
You're watering your yard, you're motioning, and then a guy stops, backs up, jumps out and threatens, saying, hey-
Says, I'm gonna whip your, yeah, I-
I'm sorry, Mr. Hosteller. At this point, we need to hear a discussion from the council. But we're very sympathetic, very sympathetic with your, your situation.
But that's, okay. And I, and, and the thing about it is, is I mean, there's a problem. A problem exists and we need to focus on a resolution. So, and, and if we can eliminate the motion and try, because I don't want anyone to be hurt. I don't want a child to be hurt. I don't want a, a parent or a grandparent to be hurt. And I guess my question, a, a couple of questions is, is one, I don't, from what I understand, and maybe someone will comment for us, or if staff can help us, as far as the gate, I, I think that that's not gonna happen. Because from a safety standpoint, if something were to block the front gate, there's, front entryway, then there's no way to, for ingress, egress out the back. That's what I've been told in other additions that don't even deal while I've been on the council. So then I, it's not a question, it's a discussion, ma'am. So, um, no, that's, that's fine, sir. It's, appreciate it. Um, speed bumps, I don't know if that would work. I know that we have been told before on the city council that speed bumps are reverse potholes. And people end up being angry over speed bumps because they damage and destroy cars. So people don't want those in the neighborhoods. Stop signs, I wonder if that's just gonna double the violation. Someone's gonna speed up to the stop sign, slow down, bump their brakes and go around. So that's my question is, is how do we, there's, there is a problem. There's note about, about that. So my question is, is how do we resolve the, the problem? Um, I mean, if we put the stop signs there, I, I, if that just slows people down, then that hasn't deterred it either. I don't know. Can I ask Chief Corn a question?
Yes, sir.
Chief, what about the, you know, those signs like over in front of She Deck that show the display of how fast people are going? Do those slow people down?
It has the same effect, uh, I believe, as what our radar detection trailer would do. Uh, it would give you a visual display. It would, uh, give you what the current speed is. Um, there are several different variations that would indicate a warning, uh, or some type of a, uh, visual indicator that you may be above the threshold. Uh, that can be set at whatever the threshold would be determined by.
Okay. Cause part, part of the, part of the speeding problem is going out the front entrance where it curves. Is that right?
Uh, we've, we've worked the, the residential area in both places. We have, uh, worked it, uh, on the east end, uh, closer to the 700 block and, uh, then further onto the west side. Um, we've set up in both places.
And the speed trailer that registered 2,400 cars, was that just one day?
Uh, yes, sir, it was.
Okay. And was it a weekday, a weekend?
Uh, no, I believe it was a weekday. Uh, Tuesday, the 28th of-
During school?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Oh, that's right. It was in the spring, wasn't it?
Yes.
That's right. I remember that statistic. Okay. I, my, my discussion on the matter is, is I think something needs to be done. Whether it's a stop sign, that whether it's additional law enforcement, I don't know what it is. But I think, and, and I don't know from here where we go, but I'm certainly in favor of doing something. Um, and I don't know if it should go back to the, the traffic commission or what, but as far as my discussion is, is I think, I, what concerns me is the fact that I hear them. I mean, people are dying to raise their hands and continue to have input and stuff like that. That tells me that they're terribly passionate about this situation. And, and we're not trying to exclude you guys from the discussion, but that's not how it works at this point procedurally. But it's, but I recognize that. And by recognizing that, that concerns me that someone's, you know, is, is gonna get really upset, run out in the streets. I'm ki, I mean, I just think it's a bad situation and I think that it needs to be addressed.
Councilman McCarron?
Well, fortunately, Stone Mill isn't in my war. So, since I, so I can probably not be quite as excited about it in the, in the sense that I quite a stance. Uh, I think, I agree, just listening, that there is a serious problem. It's not something that can be addressed easily because of the fact that you have to get to the point where you deal with aesthetics, uh, versus safety. And unfortunately, safety's not pretty. Safety is signs. Safety is blinking lights. Safety is yellow things that flash at 2:00 in the morning that, you know, irritate people in their neighborhoods. But I, I think probably one of the, the, I guess what interested me the most is to listen to the discussion that had to do with, uh, the fact that there's, you know, I don't wanna dispute or, or certify that there's 2,000 cars a day. I don't base it the statistics that I saw that, you know, may or may not be, you know, reasonable. But what I do see from there is obviously there are very heavy times. People from other neighborhoods are using those streets when in point of fact, it also probably means there's not good egress coming from theirs, which is why they're coming through Stone Mill to get there as well. Uh, I agree with this, you know, the sense that visual displays slow people down. Uh, so I'll take, you know, I, well, I won't take a hand vote, but, you know, how many, how, how many of you want one parked in your yard? You know? And I'll leave that alone then. But, but not for, not for a year, or for two years, or five years, or, you know, because then you couldn't sell your house.
I'm sorry. We need to, we need to try to, try to limit the discussion between-
But once, once again, I, I, you know, as I listen to all of this, I think the major problem is egress. I could be wrong here, uh, if, if I'm not listening to this correctly. But the fact that there are, or that there is only one essential egress point, even though everybody could go back through Parkland, that's not happening. It's coming the other way. And, uh, so I, I, you know, I would think that certainly seeking another egress would be, uh, uh, for, just from my standpoint, you know, from what I'm listening to tonight and the other things there. I think one other thing I might, uh, just as a thought, certainly placing non-uniformed officers, uh, in a position where they would be able to more accurately assess some of the things that have been, uh, talked about this evening. Uh, same thing with an unmarked car. I know we have some of those as well. Uh, although they usually pick up on it because of the tinted windows pretty quickly. But, but, uh, I, you know, I, I think, you know, a, a really close look at it. Because I don't think, you know, just as I listened to a couple of folks talk about stop signs and things like that, and John mentioned it earlier, I don't feel that stop signs are always the best result. I think if you have none, then it's a problem. But if you have some there that restricts the flow reasonably, then it, then it goes beyond that. So I think that's what I'm listening to tonight. And, uh, that's my comments, uh, that's certainly looking at, you know, something, you know, uh, with a non-uniformed officer, maybe an unmarked vehicle as well to look back. And I know in some cases, you know, just 25 miles an hour is not very fast. But I can tell you, I live in a very small neighborhood as well that has, I live on a slightly winding street, not as severe as there. But I know many times that 15 miles an hour is too fast. Because we have a lot of, I live in one of the older neighborhoods and we have children there. And so there's not a way of, you know, necessarily saying that you wanna go down to, you know, you know, another speed. I, I think it just needs to be looked at. Well, I think from me, what I'm listening to, egress is the major problem. A diversion of 2,000 cars a day through that one intersection, is that reasonable, John? Going on to Yukon Parkway from there is, I, well, I just, your, your data suggested it, you know, that there's a lot of traffic. And I, and, and certainly that's what Mr. Bruce's son has said as well. So I, you know, for me, that's, uh, that's my take on it. So I yield back my time there.
Councilman Gerba?
Uh, I just wanna thank you all for coming to, before the council to discuss this. To me, this is the important part right here. It's, it's using due process. I know you're frustrated. I can hear that in, in the statements you made. Um, it, obviously it's important to you. So therefore, it's important to us. Um, obviously, there's a problem. And to me, I thank you guys for coming before the council to, to deal with it in this manner. This is the way to do business, to bring things to our attention. Um, I think it's the right thing to do. So thanks for showing up and it makes a bigger impression, obviously. Um, and, and with that, I've got a couple, um, questions for Chief Corn. Um, what recourse does a private citizen have? They were talking about basically seeing people go through the, uh, the neighborhood. Does a private citizen have any recourse whatsoever to report excessive speeding and without much proof be able to issue, um, could the police department issue citations on?
You, you brought up two issues. The first one is they can always report it and make a call to, to the department. Um, if in fact the citizen wishes at, at the time to sign a complaint, uh, they must be able to identify the vehicle and then the driver. Um, the, the hard part of that is most people are not going to stop for a private citizen. Um, as, as it was warranted already this evening, it's, it's not recommended that any of you interject yourselves into traffic, um, or make any attempt to stop some motorist, um, even at the rate of speed which may be over the limit. Uh, I caution you not to enter the roadway and not to attempt that. Give us a call. Uh, you are better off suited to use the time, identify a vehicle, capture a partial tag, get a description of that driver. We will dispatch an officer. If we can locate that vehicle and we can identify that same individual who is driving at the time, we'll allow you to sign a citation against them. You may issue a summons against someone that you witnessed violate. It's nothing more than a citizen's arrest, uh, but they can issue a municipal summons based on that.
And I think that's important because, well, you know, what all of you have said is that, you know, whenever we've got something set up that's sensing the, the, uh, the speed or the police department's out there, people aren't speeding as much. The data says that. But you're seeing it. So to me, I think it's important that we have something when we don't have a police presence out there that you can do to, to try to remedy the problem. You know, maybe it's a bunch of, uh, high school kids. And if we can basically get the police department at their house, giving them a citation, their parents hear about it, you know, maybe this, some of this can be taken care of. Um, and then the, the next question I have is, um, we talked about the speed sensing at, uh, around She Deck. Is, is that technology available and can it, let's say, um, get somebody who is speeding? Obviously, if it's a 25 mile an hour zone, can it basically take the speed, get a tag? And let's say like, um, the, the stop, basically people who run red lights, we've got the cameras at certain intersections. Can that same technology be used in this?
I haven't seen a device that incorporates both facets of technology. Um, the red light detection camera systems, uh, are completely different than the radar or the Doppler radar systems that are installed on signs that do nothing except emit a displayed or current speed and give a warning that a, that a- and give a warning that a, that a speed threshold has been violated.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, they don't collect any vehicle or driver information.
Okay, thanks, Chief. That's all I have.
All right, I have just a, a few comments. First off, I'm, I have, I have a number of friends that live in Snow, Stone Mill. I'm sympathetic to the concerns, uh, of the residents. Um, I'm having, and playing the devil's advocate, I'm having a little bit of trouble based on, uh, numbers provided by the, uh, police department in, um, roughly a half a dozen occasions that they've spent time studying the traffic issue. It, the numbers are just not stacking up to the concerns. I know Mr. Bruce, for example, mentioned a DVD that has apparently been provided to somebody. Uh, I'd like to know who that is, I have not seen it. Sure, I'd like to know who, any councilmen receive it? Okay, well, let me just publicly say it has not been shared with all of the council. We would, we would, uh, any information that's gonna help solve the problem is gonna be beneficial. I live in, uh, I live in Parkland, too, at one thirteen Snowmass Drive. The longest through street in the neighborhood. It doesn't run through into Snowmass, but it's the longest through, through street in Parkland, too. Uh, but I'm, I'm gonna tell you something. The speeders that, we, we see them every day. We see them shoot down our street every day. So, I understand what you're dealing with, what you're seeing, because obviously, we don't have, uh, the manpower to have a police officer stationed at both ends of Snowmass Drive to keep, you know, speeders down, we just don't. And I know that, uh, that's not gonna be a service that can ever be provided for Stone Mill either. I know that one of the things that has been, been brought up in, in many pages of emails that I've received from Stone Mill, uh, residents, um, a gate has been mentioned a number of times at the west end. Um, I'm, like the other council members, I believe that the odds of that happening are somewhere between slim and none because you cannot, um, block the egress for public safety services. Police and fire have to have access to be able to get in and out. Um, I believe that we could do a study. Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, we, we could probably, I, and I would think, I'd like to see this happen. We have a, a traffic commission, I believe, that tries to be very thorough in what they do, and we have a police department that I believe is very thorough in what they do. And I think that probably the next step to address this would be for our police department, and I don't know if you have particular officers you could assign to this, but to be able to conduct a study between the two and come up with a, a legal and feasible option to solve the speeding issue that apparently exists in Stone Mill. Uh, if it's there, it should be fixed. How do we go about finding the resolution? Not by attacking each other. That's gonna get us nowhere. Working together within the city government and the, our citizen boards and, um, and our police department, I believe a solution can be arrived at, I believe we can get there. Um, and at this point, I don't know what action we can take to make that happen. If we can put it on a study session, that we can have, um, the traffic commission and members of the police department there with pertinent information, then we could probably start narrowing this down and funneling it into a solution that's gonna be acceptable to the residents of Stone Mill as well as the city and its, uh, its, um, safety services. And when I say that, police and fire have to be able to, uh, be able to get in and out of the neighborhood. So, that being said, wake my laptop back up here. That being said, if there are no further comments, we will move on to item four on the agenda.
Let me make a motion there. I move that the matter be remanded back to the, uh, traffic commission for further consideration and discussion along the lines of what you've just discussed, then, about continuing with the group and with the chief and figure, I mean, that's my motion. I, I move that the matter be remanded back for further consideration, otherwise, it's gonna die here tonight and nothing's gonna happen.
Second.
We have a, we have a motion in place, do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion by the council? Any further discussion by the council? Call the roll, please.
McCarron. Yes. Alberts.
Yes.
Gerba.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Opitz.
Yes.
Item four, consider approving an expenditure of funds in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, one hundred sixty-three dollars and ninety-six cents for the purchase of four hundred and sixty-two poly carts from IPL Incorporated from the Capital Improvement Fund as recommended by the sanitation director. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion? Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Alberts.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
Opitz.
Yes.
Gerba.
Yes.
Item five, consider approval of the two thousand thirteen U.S. Department of Homeland Security Staffing for Adequate Fire and Safety Response. Excuse, excuse me, folks, we still have a meeting going on here. Thank you. Item five, consider approval of two thousand thirteen U.S. Department of Homeland Security Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency, uh, Response, uh, SAFER, Safer Grant Proposal Submission. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a quick question. Um, now, this is a three-year, correct, if I'm wrong, it's a two-year.
Two-year.
Two-year, so at the end of two years, are, are the firefighters that are employed under this, are they considered temporary workers? Or actually, how does that work?
They are not, we are not under any obligation to bring them on staff as a full-time employee at that time.
So, it's essentially like temporary contract?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Essentially.
Do we have any further discussion? Seeing none, call the roll, please. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. McCarron.
I, I guess I wanna ask a short question about that, because in point of fact, they're gonna be on staff for a two-year period of time uh, under the contract. Uh, is it understand by both them and the union and everything that that's a two-year?
And in fact, we have them, in fact, we have them sign an agreement.
So, we do have an agreement with them?
That they understand.
Because if they come on and they decide they wanna join the union, and then they become a part of the union, would that become an issue?
Only when they become full-time members of our staff. And until that point, that we hire them as a full-time employee, they cannot become a member of the union. They enjoy the benefits of being of the union, but they do not, they cannot be a member of the union. Our union, our, our lodge.
Is that true, uh, councilman?
What do you mean, is that true?
Well, I don't know that you can prevent anybody from joining a union, is that correct or not?
Well, that, not our lodge. To do that, they would have to do all of their own dues paying, we don't, don't deduct it.
It's my understanding that there will be a written agreement among the parties, the firefighters, the local union, and the city of Yukon, that they will have protection for the period of time that they are employed under the agreement, but they are not going to be members, or have the same benefit.
So, that's part of the agreement, though, that, that in point of fact?
My understanding, there'll be a written agreement or memorandum of understanding, signed by all the parties involved, the union,
You know.
the, the city of Yukon, and the firefighters who are to be hired.
Well, what I'm saying is, is that I could go join the firefighters' union, if I'm willing to pay the dues and everything else and go to the meetings, I might not be an active participating member, but I could do that. That's why I asked the question. Unless I am just terribly wrong, there, uh, that, you know, past circumstances around union activities, uh, that's why I asked the question, and if it's, and if we have an agreement with...
That may be true, I don't know who can join the, their union, what their bylaws and what their governance, but the collective bargaining agreement covers permanent, full-time employees.
Okay, so, well, okay. So, then you'd be covered in the sense they would not be permanent, full-time employees, they would be contracted employees,
Contract employees.
And therefore, wouldn't be covered under our labor agreement with them, and that's why I asked the question.
That's my understanding.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Sure.
Do we have any further discussion? Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Smith.
Yes.
Gerba.
Yes.
Alberts.
Yes.
Opitz.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
Item six, consider an expenditure of funds in the amount of twenty-six thousand, five hundred dollars for additional services agreement with New World Systems for implement, implementation services from the Technology Capital Improvement Fund as recommended by the Technology Director. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Do we have any discussion? Do we have any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Gerba.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
Alberts.
Yes.
Opitz.
Yes.
Item seven, consider approving ordinance number twelve ninety-four and ordinance, amending ordinance number six fifty-seven, Appendix A of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Yukon, Oklahoma, by providing that part of the northeast quarter of Section twenty-eight, Township twelve, North Range five, West Indian Meridian, Canadian County, Oklahoma, Legacy Lakes, according to the recorded plat thereof, by changing from R-one PUD, Single Family Residential District, to R-two PUD, Combined Residential District, Track one, and a part, and a part of northeast quarter of Section twenty-eight, Township twelve, North Range five, West Indian Meridian, Canadian County, Oklahoma, according to the recorded plat thereof, to be ranged from R-one PUD, Single Family Residential District, to C-three PUD, Restricted Commercial District, Track two, and declaring an emergency. Do we have a motion?
Some of you.
Second.
Do we have any discussion? Do we have any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Alberts.
Yes.
Opitz.
Yes.
Gerba.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Move the emergency.
Do we have any discussion, item seven A? Oh, we need a second, I'm sorry, do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion? Do we have any discussion, item seven A? Call the roll, please.
McCarron.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Gerba.
Yes.
Opitz.
Yes.
Alberts.
Yes.
Item seven B, consider approving a planned unit development for Legacy Lakes Phase Two Development as recommended by the Planning Commission. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Do we have any discussion? Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Smith.
Yes.
Opitz.
Yes.
Alberts.
Yes.
Gerba.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
Item seven C, consider approving a preliminary plat for Legacy Lakes Phase Two Development as recommended by the Planning Commission. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Call the roll.
Opitz.
Yes.
Gerba.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
McCarron.
Yes.
Alberts.
Yes.
Item eight, discussion, consideration, and action regarding preliminary plat for Phases two through five for the Frisco Ridge subdivision as submitted by Craft and Tolan Associates for Oklahoma City Properties LLC. Do I have a motion?
Most to approve.
Second. Is that the motion to approve the preliminary plat?
Yes, discussion, consideration, and action regarding preliminary plat for Phases two through five for the Frisco Ridge subdivision as submitted by Craft and Tolan.
Let the record show that Councilman Opitz has left the room.
We've had a motion and a second, do we have any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I, uh, would like to see this matter as far as the preliminary plat approved tonight. Um, I know there are several, uh, families that are here, uh, north of sixty-six that have some issues regarding, uh, the drainage. And I think that this, um, this preliminary plat has brought that back before the council, and I think it's certainly something that needs to be addressed. I do, though, believe that there are two separate things, and, uh, I have spoken briefly with Mr. Bottom, and what I would like to see is this passed tonight, but I would like to see the property owners, now that we're here, and, and have a spokesperson, and I would like to s- to have a specific planning session and talk with and deal with not only your property, but other people that have issues regarding the water out north of town. Uh, it's been issue, it's been an issue before the council on several different occasions. I think it's due time that we sat down and had a discussion and, uh, potentially bring a hydrologist, uh, some, uh, Robbie does a great job, he's a city engineer, but maybe we need to get some eyes from a third party, some other hydrologist or someone else who's not tied to the city, who might come in and offer a different perspective. You all have been looking at it for a long time, I've looked at it my whole life, maybe some out-of-towner might shed some different light on it for, for one side or the other. But I, I think it's like with the other group of people, I think it's a discussion, there's a problem. There's no doubt that there's a problem out there, so the question is not to argue with one another, but how do we resolve the problem? So, tonight, I'm in favor of the plat, but the preliminary plat has to come back again to be re-approved. Um, Mr. Hagan, where'd he go? Is here, he and, uh, Mr. Gerba and I met, uh, he came, uh, here to the city offices, and we sat down and went over extensively the, the drain plan, uh, for the new development, it appears to be adequate. Um, that's only a preliminary plat, that hadn't been approved, and to have to come back before the council and go back before the Planning Commission. So, that's what I support tonight, is approving the preliminary plat, and then I support, and I want you all to, uh, hopefully, agree to participate in an ongoing discussion, and, um, Mr. Bottom, when we talked earlier, maybe in the month of October, hopefully in October, so, or at the end of August, so September, October, would have a meeting, get the farmers and the landowners north of sixty-six and, uh, those people together and continue this discussion and, 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 and talk about a solution. So, that's, uh, I encourage the vote for the preliminary plat, plat and the matter, this other matter be put on the, uh, planning session, which occurs at six o'clock on our first meeting of the month.
Actually, Mayor, I think it's gonna have to be a special meet, I think it's gonna have to be a special meeting of the, uh, council to be able to accomplish what we want to do and not be constrained by a thirty-minute time limit that we have in the study session itself. So, and it may, it may require, um, you know, this, this problem has existed, uh, north, uh, of town for, um, thousands of years. Uh, at least a few hundred years, and, um, you know, to, to say that we can accomplish a solution, uh, that everybody can be a part of over a, um, a few minutes, uh, even an hour, I don't know that that can be done. But a series, I think, of meetings, much like what we had on other issues, might be, uh, might be appropriate.
If I could make a suggestion, I, I know i- in the, uh, little over two years that I've been on the council, we, we have hired an independent hydrologist, I believe they were from Tulsa, uh, for, uh, studies of the flood, uh, flooding problems, uh, and it was tied in with the Highway Four improvements north of town.
All, all flooding within the city limits.
Right, so, my, my thought is, um, I wonder if it is possible to put on the agenda consideration for the council prior to the meetings, a study by perhaps that same independent, uh, hydrologist that would be able to take new information in addition to the information that they acquired in the previous study and maybe address, maybe have a more thorough, um, catalog of information so that when we started meeting with the landowners, uh, we would have an, um, an educated position for both the landowners and the city to address.
Certainly, and it, and I can assure you, that study will be far, uh, over my spending authority, so it would have to be brought to the council.
Right, that's, that's what I'd suggest, so I don't know if, um, I don't know if that, if the motion should be amended to reflect that, or if we have to, if we can leave it as it is and then maybe put the additional expenditure on a future agenda?
Yep.
And then may, after that, if that item were approved, then possibly set up the series of meetings with the, the landowners after that information was available to us.
And we have no clue to know even what to ask for.
Right.
So, yeah, it needs to be two.
Two separate items.
Absolutely.
So, the motion, uh, we've got a motion and a, a second, so at this point, unless there's any further discussion, state your name and address, please.
Okay, I'm Larry Holman, and I live in eleven, uh, nine oh four Rural Coach Drive. And basically, I think in under three minutes, I can open or have some valuable information. Uh, you're right, it's been going on for years, and I have farmed north of Yukon for like thirty years. I've been, already been down to the Oklahoma City Council, uh, on various developments that's, uh, developing. And there's a major water drain, drainage problem north of town, but extends all the way into Oklahoma City around Overhoster. And as far as wasting money on a study, uh, legally, I don't know exactly what it...
I don't know exactly what it is, to put it simply, I have a couple of pictures here. I can't find who's in control of the dam, but Overhoster Dam is not opened up, the bypass is not opened up, they keep it shut, with a little common sense, opening it up would make a dramatic improvement. There's right before the rains, it's shut, the water level in the river is 1,243 feet, basically it stays there all the time, basically, they fill Hefner and Overhoster, then if you would drain the river, you know, you would have all, you know, all, you know, all that extra storage space, you know, for water to runoff, so it's a, it's a problem in kind of getting people, who's in charge, who's going to control when it's open, and then also, Yukon has some, has some problems with Turtle Creek down there, like when you've increased the drainage going down Cornwell, you know, water's going over the bridges, it's actually coming out of the sewer lines down on Wagner Road, there's, there's really no need for the waste a bunch of money on a study, they just need to do something about it because the, on the place north of town on Wagner Road, they're extending the sewers, so basically, there's a problem, it's, it's a bigger problem than, than you all can solve, I mean, before any development actually is, is approved, in my opinion, it's not going to really affect me because I'm underwater already, but you need to address how it's going to drain, not just the drainage off the development until it gets on down the river and on even pass down to downtown Oklahoma City, because it's, you know, I've heard anywhere from Devon to various names of who controls the dam, and it seems like no one's in the control, so that's in a nutshell, if you want some pictures, Overhoster's never opened, you know, in 10 seconds, people come up and say when, when it's running, it's, I've never seen the doors open, well, the doors aren't open, they're flowing over the top of it. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. We actually are not allowed to exchange.
Well-
Do we have anyone else? Sir?
Can I ask a question, if you're allowed to do this?
Sir, could you give us your name and address, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Albert Sculch, 1825, West Highway 66. If you approve this plat, are they allowed to do any work until this drainage issue is resolved?
Again, we're not actually allowed to exchange. I, I will say this, it's my understanding that the, this is a replat vote, the final plat will again come before the council for final approval.
Well, are we going to get a say in this matter?
We're here tonight to discuss, we're here, we're here tonight to discuss your thoughts.
Well, my thoughts are what they've always been, you all have a serious problem, drainage to the north of 66 Highway. You have, with your Westport 66 and your Frisco Ridge, you have increased the water flow, I mean, it's tremendous what water comes through there now. I have heard the statement, retention pond, retention pond, retention pond, I don't think anyone in this room has yet to see a drop of water in them, they don't work, they don't work. You have sent so much water down there that you have deprived me of 30 acres of farmland, which is my livelihood, think about that, I make a living doing with that land. You have deprived me of that. You have silted it up so bad that the water cannot drain to the river, the water cannot drain off of me, I, I just, I don't understand why you all want to do this plat without helping us at all in any way. My request would be that you reject this plat indefinitely until the drainage problem is solved. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone else that would like to come forward and address the council? I would, I would just add this, I know that, I know that the developers have gone to a great deal of time and expense to provide maps and, and so on of the flood plains and flood zones that, that are concerns, and I believe that what they've provided is in, in, in good faith and, and as a result of great effort, and I want to remind everybody here this evening that what we're voting on is the preliminary replat for the Frisco Ridge subdivision as submitted by Craft and Tull and Associates. I'm, also, it's my understanding that if even the final plat is approved, that as the project goes on, if an issue with drainage or flooding arises, the city has authority to request changes of various types in order to mitigate the additional or possibility of additional waters traveling north and creating worse flooding than already exists, so, that being said, do we have any further discussion? Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Alberts.
Yes.
McCarron.
No.
Smith.
Yes.
Gerba.
Yes.
Item nine, city manager's report, information items only.
Last month, the sales tax report that we got was pretty meager, showing a .71% increase. This month, I can tell you that it appears that somebody paid late, because this month's sales tax increase is 12.89%, taking our year-to-date average to 6.63%. And it's pretty easy from the graph, and I think you all have seen, seen the graph, that it's pretty easy to tell when, when somebody pays later, something like that happens, because it, the, the trend lines just, just don't match up. But very good news from sales tax income standpoint. The storm season of May was very damaging to a lot of people, including Moore on the 31st. During particularly the May 31st time period, the city of Yukon sustained substantial damage, particularly as it relates to our well field around Will Rogers World Airport. FEMA was contacted, we made application, and they have certified damages to the city of $235,931.37. The preponderance of that related to our wells at the airport of $177,090.99. Of the 235 number, FEMA will pay 75% for, to bring us back online with all of our wells, that amounts to $176,948.53. The state and the city then split the remaining 25% at $29,491 each. But we're very, very fortunate that we had good cooperation and that we were certified so quickly for, for the loss, and I'm, the, I'll tell you that our, our reimbursement for debris removal was $5,015.6, not quite what the Oklahoma City, Moore, Norman and others were looking at when they were looking at 10, 15, 20 million dollars in debris removal costs. So, good news again on the, on the FEMA front as well. With that, Mayor, I'll close my report and stand ready for questions.
Are there any questions?
Seeing none, item 10, new business? Seeing none, item 11, council discussion, Councilman McCarron.
Well, I think, I'd like to say thank you for all of the people that came tonight, especially folks from, interested in all of the issues that came before us this evening, I think we've got a lot of things to look at going forward. I personally just want to thank the police department for their efforts in providing us with the information that we received in Stone Mill, which would, gave us a very good perspective of, of things, I think it's something that is going to require a lot of looking at pretty closely, especially in my view of the egress issue. Folks from Stone Mill, once again, I'd just say thank you for coming, I thank all of the people from Ward 4 that came tonight north of the highway to come and, and support and speak and everything else, and, and for me, you know, Yukon is still a great place to be and still a great place to live, I think as the gentleman pointed out, with the issue on the war, on the water, it's going to go far beyond, you know, I can take it even all the way back to Canton Lake and, and look at the development that occurred there with the Corps of Engineers changing things that also aggravated some of our situation here as well. But anyway, I think it is incumbent upon us, moving forward, to certainly take that issue very seriously and look into it along with Oklahoma City and the Union Pacific and, and all of the other folks that are involved. Once again, just thanks for all the folks coming tonight. With that, you?
Councilman Gerba?
Just a quick point that I want to make, and this is just basically directed to all the citizens that live north of 66, is that when we approached this, initially, we had some reservations concerning, specifically concerning Frisco Ridge, what they're intending to do, and that's why we basically put, put off the vote, and I just want to assure you guys that, at this point, when we met with, with Phil, Hagan, he basically told us what they had planned to do, he crunched the numbers, he told us basically what they were doing to mitigate any of the water that's going to be coming down your way. What we saw was, in my opinion, and, and multiple people's opinion was sufficient, so what I want to do is stress that this is different, we understand you guys have some serious issues with water down there, but to me, I don't think we should penalize a developer who's doing the right thing and he's doing, he's taking the proper measures to make sure that that development does not result in more damage, more water down your way. We definitely have some issues down there, but to me, it's, it's a separate issue than this specific development, so I just wanted to make that point. Thank you.
Councilman Alberts?
I, I think I just echo what Nick says, that the opportunity to just come and to continue to discuss, that's what makes government, what makes government work, when we get upset and we go home and we stop talking, it stops moving, and I know it's frustrating, and I, and I apologize for your frustration, but you have my commitment that I, as long as I'm here, that I will continue to work with all of you all that live north of 66, it's my intention to, in October, to sit down and have a meeting, I don't think it can be done in one meeting, I think that's a good point, I, no one ever brought up the idea of Lake Overhoster, you know, Mr. McCarron talks about Canton, I think there's a lot of things that we probably haven't discussed, so each one of you all have a different view, you're affected different, differently, we've all seen it and driven around it if we've lived here, I used to live, I grew up out by Richland, so we had, I, so I've seen it come and go when it was Brisco's place, I remember the logs set on top of the white wooden fence before Mr. Funk came along, so I'm well aware of the problem, but I want you to know that I think that you have the ear of the council and that we are committed to listening. You know, we can eliminate the water, maybe we can move it, maybe, I, I don't know what we can do, but we want to listen, so, thank you for coming and, and be patient, and just like, I don't know that anyone's left from Stone Mill, but again, once we stop talking, it, it just quits working. So continue to talk and continue, we may become frustrated with you, you all may become frustrated with us, but the one thing is, is let's continue to work together, it is a great community. You know, Mr. Opitz is about to sound off and he'll yell here in a minute and tell us what a great community it is, but by golly, it is, and it is frustrating, it's frustrating to be on the council sometimes, I mean, I don't know, does it hurt our feelings that maybe, you know, people get on us? Well, we're the sounding board for the community, that's what we signed up for, but I appreciate you coming, I appreciate your spirit, and if I were fighting for my child or my land, I would feel just the same as you all do, but you have, you have our ear and you have our commitment. Secondly, I'd like you all to be just as committed to donate, come walk or run to the Spirit Sprint, it's on, it's on, it's on Saturday, Jeannie, you'll be there, won't you, taking a picture of me as I chug along and, and-
Yes, ma'am.
So, but it, it's for a wonderful, the Spirit League that plays out north of town on some of the water that's affected by the land, I mean, some of the land that's affected by the water. So maybe they do play on the water that's affected by the land, I'd give it that land gets in the way of the water, so, but if you can, it's 8 o'clock, it's over at, around Boot Hill, if you can come and participate or donate, it's a worthwhile cause, and again, thank you for coming.
Councilman Opitz?
We do live in a wonderful city, and it is a wonderful place, but let me tell you something, these people right here on this horseshoe, they care, they care about our community, they care about all of the thoughts, and I, I just want to thank the people for coming and sharing their thoughts tonight and sharing their concerns, sharing their frustrations, because that's the way we get things worked out, and we will get things worked out if we don't stop communicating like John says here, so we won't stop communicating, we'll keep communicating, but things in this area of Yukon, Oklahoma are just pretty good. Folks, we don't have a lot of things that are bad news, okay? We got a lot of good news out there, we got a lot of good things happening, and we're going to continue to make them better, okay? Go ahead, Mayor.
Well, not to whip a dead horse, but I, I also would like to thank the citizens of Yukon that came forward this evening with their concerns. One, one area that many people are lacking in are communication skills. I would like to suggest that prior to being upset or getting angry with council members or commission members or police officers, it might be a good idea to understand what their feelings on whatever the topic is prior to the attacks. I know as Councilman Albert said, we signed up for it, we'll take it, we'll, we'll smile most of the way through, but I've got to show you dozens of pages of emails exchanged with a resident in Stone Mill that made it a point to attack me and the other councilmen and the commission members, and in none of these 40 pages of emails will you find him asking me what I thought or what my position was. So if I were to make a suggestion, if you want to get something done, communicate, don't attack, communicate, I can assure you that, in my opinion, there's nobody sitting on this council that wouldn't try to bend over backwards to do the best they could for the greater good of the city of Yukon.
Amen.
That being said, we'll adjourn this meeting.